I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting scheduled for Thursday, June 14, 2018. If you please rise and pay your respects for the play.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice, law.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary, may please note the role and notice that Mr. Curtis and Mr. Spiz have excused absences.
I noted.
Item for approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved by Mr. Berger, seconded by Mr. Noel. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing on those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? If that motion passes. Item number five, approval of the minutes for the Planning Commission meeting for May 10.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting dated May 10, 2018.
I'll second that motion.
Been moved by Mr. Berger, seconded by Mr. Noel. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing on those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item number six, public comments on items that are not scheduled for public hearing or on the agenda.
Well, thank you. I wanted to introduce Lauren Carlson, our new planner that'll be filling in and taking over a lot of the responsibilities for Matt. We all understand, as you know, moved on. And he's down in Savannah, Georgia. So, as Deanna says, he's suffering with heat and bugs down there. We wish him well. But anyway, Lauren comes with a lot of experience and with her credentials, et cetera. I'm sure she's gonna do a good job. So, if, you know, we anticipate to continue on our quality service to the township. I still will be involved, have been involved in a lot of the meetings. And I also add too that Lauren is also assisting in Orion Township as well. So, many of the same responsibilities that Matt had at both in Orion and Oxford, Lauren will take on those responsibilities as well. Lauren's had a good experience with Michigan Association of Planning. I'm sure with any of the training sessions and educational opportunities in the state of Michigan through MAP. Lauren was the go-to person for many of that, the educational aspects. She has a master's degree in planning, but again, we are firm things quite highly of Lauren. We want you to feel comfortable with her and welcome her to Oxford Township.
As we do. Thank you. Welcome. I have an item to read into the minutes under public comment. This is from the Stony Lake Village Condo Association, Waterstone, Oxford, Michigan, dated April 5, 2018. Dear Township Board, Planning Board, and Zoning Board, It's come to the Stony Lake Board's attention that a December 11, 2017 email was sent from Karen Keller to Bill Dunn under the signature as President of Stony Lake Village Condo Association, in which Ms. Keller stated, "We have not authorized anyone to speak for the association on any topic." But then went on to say that the Board has not taken a stand one way or the other on the Legacy Center. Quote, "We do feel it is a real asset to the community. What they have provided for all ages is great. It is a well-run organization." Those later quote, "we" unquote comments in reference to the Legacy Center were never discussed as a Board nor approved by the Board. In fact, the email as a whole sent was not known nor approved by the Board. The Board asks that if this email be brought up, mentioned, or included in future legacy submissions, or any other submissions, or any Oxford Boards' meetings, that quote, "we" unquote comments be ignored or disregarded. Thank you, Stony Lake Village Condo Board. Item number seven, Commissioners' comments. Mr. Noel.
I have no comment.
Mr. Berger?
I have none at this time.
Mr. Humwick?
I don't have any comments.
Rossner?
No comment.
Okay, I have one comment. It's notice of a public hearing for the Charter Township of Orion Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July 5 at 7:05 PM in the lower level of the Orion Township Hall, 2525 Jocelyn Road, Lake Orion, Michigan, on the following matter. PC-2018-22 Conscious Senior Living Conditional Rezone Request. This request is a rezone 985 North Lapeer Road, Parcel 09-02-126-007, from single-family residential R1 to office professional OP with conditions. If you're not able to attend, you may send correspondence to Orion Township Hall addressed to the Planning Commission to express your concerns or comments. How you propose conditional rezoning is on file in Planning and Zoning Department Office and the Township Clerk's Office. May be examined during normal business hours, 8:30-30 PM Monday through Friday until the date of the public hearing. Orion Township will provide the necessary and reasonable auxiliary aids and services for individuals with disabilities at the public hearing upon advance notice by writing or calling Penny Schultz, Township Clerk at 2525 Jocelyn Road, Lake Orion, Michigan, 48360, or by dialing 248-391-0304, extension 4001. Please contact the Clerk's Office at least 72 hours in advance of the public hearing. Cerely Justin Maskey, Planning Commissioner, Penny Schultz, Township.
What's the address?
985 North Lapeer Road. New Beginnings Church.
Any questions?
Next to New Beginnings Church.
Yeah, she's saying is it close to the boundary?
Yes, it's adjacent. By Oxford. I think Lauren could've answered it better.
Yes.
Okay.
She told me.
Normally, if it's like on the boundary, you're looking for any input or discussion from this Board as a whole.
Lauren, do you wanna comment, or do you wanna meet?
Whatever you prefer.
Well, I think what they're saying is anybody, as an individual, has a right to attend the meeting and voice their comment.
Well, generally, coordinated planning act, you're supposed to be sending those kind of things back and forth if it's on the boundary. You see, you know.
They did.
Right, but I mean, it's not on Agenda Item for us, but generally, they're looking for their occurrence, or if there's a problem, or if we have a total plan that would clash with that, because that wasn't in our future plan, because we were relying on what they're zoning outside.
Excuse me, this is a site plan, right? Or is it special use? What's being proposed here?
It's a conditional rezoning.
Conditional rezoning.
Right.
What is proposed use?
From R1 to office professional.
To office professional.
Right, like, so if we had something planned for right next to it, to have like the Presidential Act, it would affect in our plan.
Well, what would happen would be that Orion would review it for compliance with their zoning ordinance. Oxford Township would use it for compliance with theirs. Since it is a rezoning, the adjoining properties have to be notified. So, that is what's been done. But still, it's up to the individual community to determine compliance with the actual ordinance for their own community.
Right, that's what I'm saying, would that be an Agenda Item for us, or how will we?
Yeah, it will be.
So, it could be an upcoming one?
Yeah, an upcoming.
Okay, that's what I was asking, is there a point?
Okay.
Actually, in the past, we've gotten some of these and we haven't done an official response, so that's why I'm wondering if it's gonna be on.
They're just notifying us of the public hearing.
Yeah, but we will have it on our.
As part of a normal zoning notification, that's why you received it from Orion Township. Now, Oxford Township will send one to Orion as well.
Okay, item eight, public hearings. There are none. We can move on to item nine, which is unfinished business. There is none. Takes us to item number 10, new business. A zoning ordinance 67A amendments, two bits, the rezoning criteria, and then solar energy systems. Who wants to start this? Lauren, you, or maybe the ORC? Lauren?
I can't.
Okay.
Certainly. So, these two ordinances have come out of the work that the ORC has done, and the text has been crafted and headed in and renewed, and it is now coming to the Planning Commission to be moved to a next phase, which would be putting it up for a public hearing. The groups of the text that you have there. The individual textbooks, would you like me to go through those as well?
Yeah, I think so.
Sure. So, in the review, or in the memo that you received, it breaks at the hold of them, the rezoning criteria for section 18.2 and 18.3. The current zoning ordinance does not contain, or does not contain, Criteria of Analysis Act for analyzing, reviewing, and reviewing the rezoning requests. So, the intent of this amendment is to provide guidance to both township officials and applicants, and importantly, land use factors relating to rezoning. A minor amendment to section 18.3 requires the petition to write in response to the rezoning criteria as part of the rezoning applications. And then the other amendment, the other amendments of solar energy systems, the current zoning ordinance does not contain standards pertaining to solar energy systems. And the proposed amendments attempt to directly plan for small and large-scale solar energy systems, defining regulations of three different types of solar energy systems that are that range from type one, smaller solar energy systems, to the second type, which is larger than the type one, but based on the zone district and system size, and the type of grid which are very large solar energy systems or irradiated solar farms. The proposed text contains definitions, city district use matrix, and general regulations related to solar energy systems.
Excuse me, could you pull Mike over?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry. Shall I do that again?
No, you're fine.
All right, so let's take a look at the first item. Item 18.2, yes. I'm pretty sure everybody received their packets and reviewed them correctly. So, this was to add a little more scope to what we've been doing in years previous. Does anyone on the Commission got anything to subtract or add? Or anyone from ORC wanna add anything?
No, I think what we did was try to make it more, I don't wanna say goodbye, I don't wanna use that.
Dividable?
Definitive, yes. Definitive as to what we want. The intent is there for the community to use as a guideline. And it's written, and Matt helped us write it, and he was still here to make the changes, and we all agreed, and that's why it's being proposed in front of you tonight.
We're pretty old enough.
I know when it originally came, there was some other stuff from like the Land Use Institute that just a little more detail on flow sheet wise, just to make sure we go through the process, only because I have quite a long history with Board, and I don't remember when people change over, and we don't make the findings a fact. You know, I was hoping for a little bit more detail, and that, you know, the Planning Commission shall review each and every one of these and make a determination. I know it says findings a fact, but, you know, I've been on this Board where the findings a fact, they're looking, and I go, yeah, it's fine. And I just don't want that to happen.
So, you're saying we need to review?
Yeah, I mean, it's findings a fact, that should be reviewed and make a determination and vote on each one. That's what I would like to see added. When we have to slow down and put the cog in there and just say, okay, look at each one, and everybody has to make a determination and vote, we get a better decision than if we try to do it as a whole. And I'm only saying based on history. Sometimes with registered things, you know, in CBA, we make findings, and you can every up, you know, what? Gives everyone a chance to comment and do that. It would be in C, you know, 18.2C, and then there's just a couple typos. One should have a period, three get rid of the question mark.
Did you have something to say?
I would, yeah, I think it's good that the Township is considering these. I think it's good to have criteria to evaluate a rezoning. These standards are already in the state statute in terms of the general language. I personally, though, I do not know of any communities that vote on these individually. I don't think I'd do that. To go through it, one, step one, compliance with the master plan, step two, consistently surrounding land uses, three, four. I know you do a similar procedure for your special uses, but I don't think it'd be appropriate for rezonings. I think you do, what you do is you take it all into consideration as a whole. You would not divide them individually and vote on each criteria individually. Is that what you're implying, Cal?
Yeah, to break it down. You know, and it says right there, the Planning Commission shall ensure that all the criteria be met in its integrity.
Let's take item number two, though. We had something in front of us, and five of us looked at it, and let's say Tom said, "No, I totally don't think that it's inconsistent with the existing land uses." That is his opinion, but if no one else stands for him, then that's gonna move forward. If you don't voice your negative opinion.
Right, exactly.
But we don't have to try and take a vote up. But if you disagree with one of those items, then your responsibility is, I'm sure, to say, "Yeah, I disagree, I don't think it's in there."
I agree with that. I mean, the Commissioner or public, because never the public would say, "I don't think it meets with the consistency with the master plan." That's your opinion. You're still entitled to make that comment. But I think a vote on individually, I mean, then what you take, there's seven criteria?
Well, the problem I see is if you do that individually, you could outvote yourself into where you're saying, "I'm not gonna approve this app." So, you know, the rezoning request would never happen. I mean, you look at the whole picture, and you look at all the items, and then you, as they formulate themselves together, you get the majority of the people that either say yes or no on the rezoning request. I don't wanna do them individually. We convoluted all the time as to who's gonna be favorable for each one of them individually.
Well, then we're kinda contradicting ourselves. It's the Planning Commission shall ensure that the following criteria can be met. That means that every piece of that criteria has to be met.
Well.
That's what the wording says.
It's the Commission, though, not each member of the Commission.
Right.
Right.
I don't know, I don't wanna do them.
Well, the other things, there's four criteria in there, which, what wins? What's approved? Four out of three?
Well, that's what I meant.
Two out of five? What's, I mean, what's?
You'd be fighting with each other, right?
Well, according to that.
And they all receive equal weighting? I think you're getting, going to get into problems with that.
Well, that's what I'd like to know, because it says here, "Planning Commission shall ensure that not following criteria can be met." These are all the criteria. If they can't be met, then it shouldn't be resolved.
And so, why would you vote?
And looking at black and white, and then you're saying, "No, don't read black and white, read something else into it."
No, but that's something interesting, is that that's why we do vote. But we're not voting on each singular item.
Correct.
But if it says all that criteria has to be met in order to do it?
But that's where those.
Whether you vote individually or.
In my mind, if it did meet all of them, in his mind it did, in yours may have not, but in his and the rest of, said yes. So, then in effect, the Commission said yeah.
I personally don't wanna, I think we'd be fighting with each other individually, maybe on one component versus another component. I don't wanna do them individually. I think what we did when we made this change in the ordinance with compatibility with the state regs and their guideline criteria, we're trying to meet it all in a formal manner that we would look at what we think would be in the best interest of the community to make that rezoning request. I'm not for every rezoning request always, but then that's my right to vote no at that time, whether it met all the criteria or not would be another issue.
So, if it's not consistent with the master plan, we go on and say, "Well, it's inconsistent."
It won't always be consistent, I don't believe. Not every rezoning request would be consistent. I'm the one who recently made a statement that I'd like to see us be a little more consistent with the master plan.
But if it's not, we're supposed to redo the master plan before we rezon it?
Well, we can't. That's not gonna happen every time, though. We don't.
Shouldn't be resolved.
Well, then you would vote no.
Then you would vote.
You hear enough of the public saying no.
Yeah. If you got enough no votes, it wouldn't get every, you know, just like when the gentleman came in up there next to Goddard School. He wanted to put that multiple facility in there with all those people and wanted to rezon that OP property.
Correct.
We all voted no. We didn't think it was a compatible rezoning for that area, and we were on, maybe not everybody was on the same page, but we all voted no. And Jim Butler was the one representing the client, who was from out of state. And that's a rezoning request we voted no on, and then there's been some other rezoning requests that we have voted yes on, and as I look back, sometimes maybe I would've changed my mind after I saw it happen. But now, I'm trying to be more critical about rezoning, so I think as a unit, and we look at the criteria together, and we do it together, not all individually, we say yes or no in the end, not whether it all works perfect every time. It may not. So, I don't wanna do them all individually, I just wanna do them as a whole, and then we'll cast our vote as.
My concern is, is there's seven, and does one have more weight than the other?
Yeah, I don't wanna do that.
No, I don't.
Well, that's just my opinion. I hope we're, hopefully, we're going to make this amendment change.
Can I answer, just for off speaking? You had three items that you had issued? This was one of them, right? Voting on each one? What were the other two items?
Just wording that just says you actually have to go through and consider them, whether you do it one by one. I don't wanna brush it over like they found in the past.
Yeah, I agree.
If you want a question mark off three.
Well, there should be, if we're gonna do punctuation, one should have a period and two should have a period. One doesn't have anything, three has a question mark.
Good.
Just for consistency.
Yeah, I think what it meant was the property in question in question mark, but.
Yeah, yeah, it just looks that.
No, it just looks that way, the way it was printed. Yeah, I think.
Yeah, because they're all questions, technically.
I get that, but does that have to go back and be done and brought back in front of us again?
I think that can be administrated.
And then, my other question is, survey. You know, sometimes, this isn't real detailed as what we want, it doesn't say the scale, it doesn't have a lot of information, and, you know, and again, I'm only going by what we see at CBA. We get handwritten things that are supposed to be the scale that aren't. What's the problem with getting a certified survey or some kind of certified document? If it's a rezoning, it's kind of a big deal, you know, in terms of township standards. You're asking for a pretty significant change if it's a rezoning, and it should be accurate, and we fancy an inaccurate rezoning, so is there a problem? I see most of the time certified surveys are something, you know, that can be done by professional engineers or required.
But aren't we looking at rezoning as a use on the property first?
Well, I'm looking at both.
From the criteria of use, I mean, size doesn't, is not relevant at that point in time.
It's information required under 18.3.
Oh, but aren't we looking at the rezoning component as the use first? I mean, size criteria can be done, obviously.
Well, I'm looking at the whole ordinance, that's what we're doing, right? This whole thing?
Well, we're looking at two sections, 18.2 and 18.3.
Right, 18.3 is information required, that's where I'm saying it.
Right. But it says a legal description of the property.
A legal description, but it's not really a survey.
Well, on a scaled map.
On a scaled map. To what scale? And to what certification?
Well, a scaled map can be to whatever scale the petitioner wants to utilize, whoever does that work for him. It could be one to 132nd, it could be one to 1A, it could be one to one-quarter, it could be one inch equals how many miles? Feet, whatever. I mean, it's what he determines to use as his scale. Now, as far as a legal description of the property, an actual legal description of a Sidwell by parcel ID, it is legally described as that piece of property by that ID, and that's been mapped out way before we get it. I mean, that's not us. I mean, that's, it's either in a subdivision, or it's within an outlot, or it's whatever it is, and we don't regulate that legal description. It's described as to the tax rules of that description of property.
Well, the reason I'm saying is because sometimes setbacks and stuff become an issue.
But we're not talking about setbacks in a rezoning request.
Yes, if we're looking at rezoning and that property.
Well, you mean a parcel that has a building on it, then?
Yes.
Okay, see, I'm thinking of use first before.
No, I'm thinking of all, I'm looking back at history, and so we rezon it, and I know one of the criteria is that it won't create a non-conforming use for building. If we don't have a scaled map to see where it sets on the property with the setbacks accurately.
Okay, then I believe at that point in time, if that's the condition, that person should request that to be, or they should table the matter, and then as that information is brought back to them, then they would have it in front of them to make their decision.
So, maybe if it just is Planning Commission, it may request a.
Right.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
When this is received, when Deanna Burns and the Building Department receives this, it's reviewed, Lauren's gonna be reviewing it. If the application is deficient because of inadequate information, it can be simply turned back to them. Oftentimes, that already happens, you know, at the building department. If you feel uncomfortable, or if you have questions at the night of the public hearing or when you're reviewing, you can table the matter and request additional information.
That's what I wanted to do.
So, yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
Table the issue.
Yeah, I don't think you need to spell it out any further. A lot of times, when an applicant comes in for a rezoning, they're using the tax ID number and the description there that's from the county assessment. So, you start with that, and many times, that's adequate in terms of a legal boundary. This is not site plan. This is, the issue in a rezoning is land uses, and examination of land uses.
Right, but I'm just saying if there's buildings on the property, then setbacks has become an issue. And so, I just wanna make sure that we're able to ask for it at the appropriate time. So, you know, putting in there that a, you know, certified drawing or a certified site plan may be required, so that someone can't say we're arbitrary and being unfair to them. Because, and a lot of the other ones we have, we have that, that we may require under documentation, it just doesn't really say that.
So, are you saying that if we don't have a certified drawings, and we would make a mistake?
Have we done that?
Yes.
As a certified drawings, and that has to make a decision?
Well, we, sometimes the job is so inaccurate, or we didn't get information on buildings, setbacks and stuff got, and properties got rezoned or split, or, you know, and other pieces of buildings on them, and a lot.
But if the building department's gonna do their job, you'll get that information when it, when it's proposed.
Well, all I'm saying is, if it's an option that we should ask, is there a problem with saying that it may be required? The Planning Commissioner, the Township, or the Township may require.
Is this clause in the applicant to have extra cost?
No, it said may require. I'm just saying may require. I'm just wondering, you think of those advocates, someone coming later going, "That's not required on this. It's nowhere in here just to say that's required, and nowhere in here just to say you can ask for any more information. This is what you said, this is what I gave you, you can reject my application, and I'm entitled for it." Why wouldn't you want under that, you know, other information may be required?
All right, so maybe you add item nine?
Well, then you wanna table this action tonight. You wanna, you wanna motion to table this action tonight to make amendments to this draft? Is that what you're stipulating?
Well, I think it's a simple amendment. Right, right. We have it in our ordinance on the other ones.
I mean.
Additional documentation may be required.
And we don't have anybody from the general public tonight, but if we make an amendment to this tonight, we'd have, excuse me, we would have to table this and then make the amendments and then bring it back, because, that's odd.
What if we're just changing?
Could you guys use your mics?
I don't know that it would be proper for us to come up here and start changing like we're right now, without having anybody, even though the public doesn't, isn't here tonight for any public response to what we're doing.
Right, that they have the opportunity to be here.
They did, but.
So, that's.
Following proper format, I don't know. I think we should table the action, and then we would have to draft zoning ordinance text in accordance with what you're asking for. I wanna know specifically what you're asking for then.
Well.
I'm just trying to be upfront here, I'm trying to get.
Let me ask, nobody else feels this important, I just think that.
No, I don't, because I think the ability.
I feel like to ask for more.
It's important, that's not, that's not true. It's important, that's not, that's not true, don't set that up.
No, I mean, we have the issue, don't set that up. What I'm saying is you have the ability to request additional information at the rezoning section of it. Or they don't.
Just nerves.
Right, I don't think we need to have it in this area here. We can move forward on this now as it stands.
But we're only going to make.
If you feel you need a certified survey at the time that the rezoning request is made, then you can ask for that and we table their action at that point in time during that meeting.
Right.
That's what I think is the proper way to go.
Because every case might be different.
And I understand it's something that could be real simple and you wouldn't need a whole lot of things. I'm just saying, the ability to ask for it, I think should be specified just so that somebody can't come back later and say, this is not on the required list, you're asking for something above the median.
That's for sure. I mean, I think she has a really good point on some issues because we did a rezoning for a gentleman that came in here to do an industrial site down next to our border of property to the village and I can't remember the address, but I heard of 600 something down there on.
Your area.
Yeah. And there was a building on the property that didn't meet proper setback requirements. And technically, I think they had to give a variance for that and they did a rezoning on it. So I think what Cali's pointing out is good, but I think what should have happened at that meeting when they came in for that rezoning request is that's when a proper survey document should have been presented. Maybe that would have changed some of the opinions of the planning commission members at that time, I don't know. So she has a good point, it's valid, but I think what we have in front of us tonight is to do this and then when those petitioners or whoever come with a rezoning request in the future, if additional information is then needed, we would table that until we receive the proper information and then voice our opinions on that later.
Okay.
That would be how I would like to do it.
And I agree with that, I understand.
So I think we could, now are we, are we going to just make a motion then to amend, make a, to recommend to the township board just on Article 18 right now? Or are we going to wait and do the solar energy systems and everything all at the same time under this criteria? Or how do you want this motion to be made tonight if we're going to make a motion, two separate motions? Or just wait and do the solar energy systems and do the motion all at one at the same time?
I'd like to throw off some of the Cali. On item number three, 18.2C3, the proposed amendment is consistent with the trends in the land development in general vicinity of the property in question. Would that be an area where you could ask those questions? Would you want? That doesn't cover.
Trends? No. No, I'm looking specifically at 18.3, information required.
I understand, but 18.2 says, 18.3 has information required, but 18.2C3 says the proposed amendment is consistent with the trends in the area. If it's not, then you can ask for more information from them, such as.
I don't know, it's like by nature, trends though.
More aligned than.
Mine is just dimensional, I'm just looking at dimensional information.
That's the parcel.
That's all.
Mr. Unwick?
I was going to make a motion that we adopt the rezoning criteria as presented tonight to the Township Board.
Excuse me, it would be, the next step would be scheduling a public hearing and then after the public hearing.
Well, fine, whatever we have to do to go forward.
I think just to Cali's point really quick, I, there's another point that I think might capture where we're not creating a non-conforming use and that's 18.27, that the amendment will not set an inappropriate press net resulting in a need to correct future planning mistakes.
Right, that's where I'm looking, but to have the information to back it up, sometimes we need a site plan.
Yeah, well, and like, like was said, I think, you can, you can table it at the time and request additional information in order to make these, to find the facts, the facts you need to.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, going, sometimes we can't tell unless we're looking at.
Right.
A site plan.
Right.
The legal description isn't going to show us what we need.
Right, but you, yeah, at that time, after you go through each of these.
Right, I was just worried that we wouldn't have the flexibility to ask for it. You know, I'm thinking a petitioner who's been rejected or told now he has to get a survey and he's going, that wasn't on the list. You're going to, you're going to make your determination based on that. If you deny me on that, it's not required, I'm going to take it for it. You know, I'm just looking for an easy solution to keep us out, but if you're comfortable with it as it is, then we can still ask for more. I don't have a problem with it.
I'm confused though, Mr. Chair. I gotta back up to Don maybe for a second. Don, are you saying that we're not making a motion to recommend to the Township Board to approve the following zoning ordinance text amendments? That we have to do this for the public hearing?
Correct, as I understand it, this is from the ORC. The ORC referred this to the Planning Commission. It's up to the Planning Commission now if you feel comfortable with these text amendments to schedule a public hearing.
Right, so if that's not done with the motion, right?
You can do it either with or without a motion.
But we just need to schedule it for a public hearing?
That's my understanding, it's brought to us, so if we have any tweaks or any ideas, we add it now, so then it would go to the public hearing with what everybody agrees on. That's why I'm saying this would be the time to correct the titles and things like that and then send it to public hearing.
Please correct the titles. To Ed's point, I think we should do one first and then two first. So. So I would take, or I would be entertaining motions to.
Okay, so I would.
Approve this from the Planning Commission to go ahead and.
Right, I'll make a motion to that the Planning Commission move forward and present the rezoning criteria as presented tonight for public hearing.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Do you want to discuss this?
Yeah, it's a discussion before, oh, it has to be second and first for discussion?
Yeah, that's.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Barry. It's been a while since I've been sitting up here, I guess. As long as he says, based on the draft of the zoning ordinance text dated May 8th of 2018.
That's it tonight. All right, so.
Well, he's referring to the date of the text.
Yeah, I, okay.
Yeah, just so it's that.
So the draft that was presented to the Planning Commission made on May 29?
It says 23rd.
23rd. 23rd, I'm sorry, May 23rd, 2018.
Resupport, Mr. Noel?
Oh.
Any discussion on the motion?
He said it was presented to the Planning Commission on May 23rd? How about the draft dated May 23?
That's what I said, the draft dated May 23rd.
Okay, not presented.
Presented, simply.
I'm going to her, okay.
And it's presented, discussed and approved then. Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that portion is approved and moved forward for public hearing. Let's continue on with 10A.2 Solar Energy Systems.
Let me bring that up here real quick. Now, I know Matt did a lot of this work and he brought in some, probably a lot of language from other communities that he served.
Well, we did, I brought in three communities and Matt brought in about two and altogether we used five different commu, I'm sorry, I'm speaking out there in this one. We used about five different communities and correlated the text that we thought would be best for Oxford Township. And then we had more than one meeting and then when we came to terms with everything, he took it back and that's what you have in front of us tonight is the amendments that were made to put this solar energy systems ordinance in place. Because we really didn't have much to define size and where it could be located on properties and all the likes. So that's what you have in front of you tonight. Amendments that the ORC has made and Mr. Lowenstein then made those amendments and corrected it and put it together and that's what we're looking at. That's the draft.
Okay, and everyone here on the panel have reviewed it. I'd like to take some questions or comments. I have a few questions about type three myself, but I'll open up the rest of the commission first. Pat, Cali, again, me and you, Adlil. They've already gone through this a million times, I'm sure. So do you have anything, any comments or?
The type one ground at 10 feet in height? And I'm looking, type one is pretty much a.
Home use?
Accessory use for any of our homes, so it's something we have a height, I mean, we have about six foot in height, limitations for fencing and stuff like that.
Do you want to know what we came up with part of this? There were a lot of communities that allowed it to go as high as 16 feet. You know that, but I have drawings that I actually put together and we looked at the six foot height rule at first, but then when some of these panels are actually assembled and how they work and we could have snow in our state that builds up on certain land configurations, they need to be so many inches off the ground and then plus they tilt generally in a direction to get the most valuable use of the light for their most efficient factors. We came up with the ground not to exceed 10 feet in height measured from the ground level to the top of the system. So when it's oriented at its maximum tilt, so now that's for type one.
Now, the setback, that has to meet setback for the zoning district that it's in?
Correct.
So the setback on some of these is rather minimal, like.
And I can show you that we didn't have anything in place before other than the fact that it's probably similar to an accessory use and we have some already in place if you drive out on Red Barn subdivision and see some of those that are in place in front yards almost. That's what we tried to put language in here to make sure that we were protecting the adjacent parcel owners to someone that would want to have one of these in a residential district. And we spent a lot of time back and forth on how we came up with the numbers. We're all open, I mean, you guys all have a right to look at it, discuss it, it should first go around on it, but Mr. Spitz is not here and Mr. Curtis is not here, so in all fairness, they're kind of missing out on this to make a recommendation for tonight, so.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking in some of the smaller subdivisions and, you know, have a big lot, I'm thinking 10 feet, you're talking to the height of this room. You've got a big panel grid five feet next to the property light, I know it can be real heavy, but you know, it is what it is. I'm just, I was just wondering where the 10 feet came from, especially since we have like a height standard for fencing, too. Ground would be kind of like that's.
We discussed the fencing a lot, I don't, because a lot of these things are tilted.
Right.
But yeah, then the back sign isn't really attractive and that's putting aside that your neighbors will go down.
I think the approach that, at least that I looked at was, by the time solar becomes more popular for people to use, these panels will be much smaller. They're not going to be 10 feet tall and they'll probably be on your roof.
Yeah, I was going to say, is there a way to encourage roof mount over it, like?
Well, we have, we've covered them all. We have, we have mounting on roofs, it's all in there, we did everything. We took ground, we took roof, we took building, we took it all.
I'm just, maybe some in the future, if it starts to become an issue, we go, you know, rooftop and then if you can't do rooftop, you can do.
Well, as they, as they, as they get more efficient with these solar panel shingles, they got shingles now, you know, who's to say we don't just mandate that the only thing you can have?
I know.
It's the same with the shingles.
But you can't mandate the product.
Well, I don't know.
Location.
The location could be on the roof only and they can go with the shingles or go with the panel on top of the roof.
I'm just thinking smaller lots, if you have bigger lots, it's not a big deal, but smaller lots.
Well, we have much smaller lots. We already have now, we didn't have anything to regulate it.
That'd be nice to encourage roof mount or ground mount or.
We already have systems out there, that's why, to me, it became an issue that we needed to do something to put something in place that we could start from. If this doesn't work in the future, and we all said this, sitting down in our draft components of it, you know, there's always amendments that could be made, but we needed a starting point. And we looked at what other communities are doing and we didn't like what some of the other communities were doing and then we looked at some that were doing what we thought was a nice job and that's why we put them into different categories of type ones, twos and threes. And the threes being the more commercial industrial component of, like when you drive up there off I-69 and you see that whole wave of solar panels that went in, that's more of what that type three unit is all about and by size. So then we restricted the size of how many square feet they could have in type one and such, so that we thought it would be more compatible with those conditions in those residential neighborhoods. And we have roof mounts where some people have covered the whole one side of their house with their rooftops now, systems that we currently have in the community. So it's up to the owner to buy the system he wants for his own benefit, but we're trying to give them a way to do it where we think it won't be materially detrimental to the adjacent property owners. And we think this was a pretty good starting point.
Is this footprint of the ground unit being included in on coverage?
I'd have to assume. I mean, I don't want to answer that question directly.
I'd like to suspect that it is, that way.
I mean, it's an accessory use incidental to the primary use on the property.
Yeah, if we could make sure we add that, that would keep on these smaller lots, somebody from really developing a lot with it.
Well, I need to ask something maybe from one of the representatives here tonight. If you're, if you're looking at a solar panel constructed component on the property, would that be square footage of coverage of the lot?
Well, I view it as an accessory structure.
Right.
And then depends on how, I'd have to look at accessory structure if that's counted in the allowable square footage.
Accessory structures are counted as total square footage for the zoning district that's located in. Yes, they are.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, well then that.
And that would cover that, right? Okay, that's how I feel too.
Now, if it was roof mounted.
That's different.
That's different.
That doesn't cover that.
We're talking about it, it's viewed as an accessory structure.
Right.
It would count as any, as a barn, as a shed.
Could be a deck.
Yeah.
Could be anything accessory.
Yep.
Right, that's how I feel.
So if I was an industrial solar farmer?
On type three?
You should mention that.
You gotta read everything under type three.
Right, so the only way I can do that?
You'd be in front of the Planning Commission for the site plan.
And on an industrial property?
Yes, sir.
So we're not going to see any solar farming?
Not unless they're in front of you. They'd be in front of this group.
Right, but we're not going to see any out in the agricultural.
No, you're not.
We're not going to see it.
No, you're not.
Farms, we're not going to see it.
No, you're not.
These quadrant, correct?
No, you're not. Not unless you want to change the ordinance.
Okay, I just want to.
I want to point out really quick.
Make sure I understood that.
To the next topic, there, it actually does call out a lot of coverage in ordinance here and it says the surface area of the ground mounted SES shall not be included in the calculation of the maximum permitted on coverage.
Shall not?
Shall not.
I'd like to get rid of not.
I'm, I'm, I don't mind getting rid of that. I thought we did do that, so not got left in there. Thank you for.
Yeah.
That's one word we're removing from the language?
Yeah, because that would make me much more comfortable in the smaller lots. Right, a little bit more.
I think we just count it as accessory.
Right, if we take up that whole sentence, that whole, the whole number there, then it would be considered as, the same requirements that an accessory structure would have. Should we, in favor of striking a whole?
If we just take up the word not, if we take up just the word not, then it's clear that, yeah.
Okay.
Wait, you just saw my, we're going to take up the word not?
Yeah, so the sentence would read the surface area, the form of an SES shall be included in the calculation of.
Okay, I'm good with that. Shall be included, I want it to be included. I thought that's what we did, but.
With that correction then, everyone else remains pretty well satisfied with the language? You'd be good putting it forward for public review?
I would be.
And, no, okay, all right, I would look for a motion. And, no, okay, all right, I would look for a motion.
The section XX, that's going to be, sorry, that's just a thing that, on the first page?
Yeah, the second.
That'll be updated once we know it's section thirty?
Okay.
Okay then.
Okay, let's see, I'll make a motion that the planning commission moves forward to provide the solar energy systems ordinance, um, that was presented on, what did, are we, this, on June fourteenth, drafted on May twenty third, to move forward for, uh, public hearing.
I'll second that.
Oh, with the mod.
And it's.
With the modification of the verbiage or language to remove the word not in line five.
Resupport, I'll sit.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion is approved, that'll go forward to public hearing. Thank you to the ORC, that is some good work done there. Looking forward to the next set that you get coming around.
We're working on it.
I know, I saw some of that work. Let's move on to item eleven, communications and committee reports. Number one, EDC, I'll speak for Jack, that meeting was canceled, uh, I believe he's got one planned for July. Ordinance review committee, anything else outside of what you presented today?
Well, I think it's important to let everyone know, and I guess there's only a few of us in the room tonight, that we did have a meeting today and Lauren is involved now, so she is going to, um, present some new documents that we're working on with the AG properties. We're striking some things out that we feel don't need to be in there under special land uses and we're very concerned about composting and some of the comments that have come up in the past, so we're, uh, going to have language to work with more of the right to farm act rules and allow people to still be able to do things within their own properties as individuals, but not under a commercial aspect.
Yep.
Uh, for profit. And so we have looked into all those avenues and we're, um, we think we have some pretty good language to put together and Lauren will be doing that for us. We're going to have another meeting just to make sure that the ordinance review committee is on the same page with each other in how we're producing it, because we also included the SF properties, uh, SF three, SF two and SF one, also to be looked into under their special land uses and strike some of the things that need to be taken out that we don't feel are necessary to be in there anymore. So, uh, we will be presenting that in the near future and also we looked at, uh, recently the idea of, um, people are very concerned about outdoor patio eating established within the community and also with food trucks, so under food service components, we're combining food trucks and outdoor dining in conversation at the same time to come up with language that we think will be better for the community in that aspect. So, uh, we kind of got sidetracked because signage was in there and some other stuff, but we are moving in the direction of what some other people had, um, more concerned with at the timeframe of how they want us to do it. I'll say it that way.
Okay.
All right.
Good stuff. I like you guys including the SS two.
Well, we think it's important to include both of them because there's ten acre, five acre, two and a half acre parcels and those are all important to us.
Fantastic. Item twelve, uh, anything from Lauren or Don?
Nothing more.
Uh, Mr. Sharp is not here this evening, uh, which brings us to item thirteen in German. Thank you very much for your work today, appreciate it. Meeting's concluded.